ليستخلفنهم في الأرض كما استخلف الذين من قبلهم ولا يمكّن أن لهم دينهم الذي ارتداههم ولا يمكّن أن لهم دينهم الذي ارتداههم ولا يبدين أن لهم من بعد خوفهم أمناء يعبدونني لا يشركون بي شيئا ومن كفر بعد ذلك فأولئك هم الفاسقون وأقيم الصلاة وآتوا الزكاة وأقيم الصلاة وآتوا الزكاة وأطيع الرسول لعلكم ترحمون لا تحسب أن الذين كفروا معجزين في الأرض ومأواهم النار لا تحسب أن الذين كفروا معجزين في الأرض ومأواهم النار ومأواهم النار ولبئس المصبي
ذاك الله خير، رضى الله علىك، بلى الله، بلى لك وال семة بدون ملاحظة أخرى، أريد فقط أن أقول بوصة قصيرة عن عزيزنا، إن شاء الله والدي سامح حمدي هو رئيس المديرية الدولية للاهتمام العالمي، شركة رغبة عالمية وذكاء ينصح الحكومات، المؤسسات، الشركات ويتنصح الحكومات، المؤسسات العالمية، الشركات والجيو على التحليات الجيو-political للهارب والافريقي والشرق الأوسط لديه مهارة كبيرة في النصائح التجارية المتعلقة بحالة الوضع السياسي والتأثير على الدخول في السوق التوسع في السوق والmanagerة من أصحاب المصلحة سامح هو عزيز على العديد من المراحل، الأجرار، الإنجليزية والعربي Sky News، BBC، ومراحل أخرى عزيزنا، تفضل، ذاك الله خير بسم الله هل تقرأ يا سامح؟
نعم
بسم الله ذاك الله خير Gaza impact and awakening of consciousness in the world
بسم الله، السلام، ورحمة الله عليه، وبركاته، وسلام عليكم لجميعكم هنا، جزاكم الله الخير لوجودي، جزاكم الله لجميعكم لعطائي الوقت وشاء الله، هذا البلد كبير جدا، شاء الله ووقتك الطائرة هي ثلاث أو أربع ساعات، والتي أكبر من Europe والتي كانت تشعرني بالتجربة أعتقد أن الإجابة مباشرة للسؤال هي أن هناك توضيح清楚that Gaza has caused the Great Awakening أولاً، هناك توضيح清楚that there is a spirit in the Ummah that suddenly emerged which is now causing tectonic political shifts in the world in terms of public policy and public opinion The first example of that is the clear shift in public opinion that we're seeing first in the Western world For the first time, we're seeing people who were supporting Israel yesterday now supporting the Palestinians There was a poll that came out on the 26th, 27th October, a Gallup poll, which was later affirmed by another poll that came afterwards Which suggested that Biden was falling behind his rivals in six or seven swing states Reuters reported that the fascinating thing about these polls was that Biden was falling in the polls not only because of the economy, but also because of his stance with regards to Palestine and Israel And they said, the Republican and Democrat polled said, they said the shocking thing about these polls was that Biden was falling in the polls over an issue where American troops weren't even on the ground The point being is that usually when a president is losing in the polls or falling in the polls it's usually because American troops are dying abroad in Iraq or Afghanistan and the American citizen is upset that their boys are dying and struggling with no real benefit coming from those wars But the fascinating thing about these polls is that Biden is falling over an issue where American troops are not dying on the ground Meaning what's causing the shift in public opinion is not to self-interest that people are concerned about the lives of their soldiers What's making him fall in the public opinion is that people are genuinely changing their minds about an issue that they had very firm opinions on only yesterday Those who were supporting Israel yesterday were now starting to stand with Palestine Because they were now seeing the very real images of the atrocities and genocide and ethnic cleansing being livestreamed on their screens The point being is that while Israel was telling the world what was happening the Palestinians were showing the world what was happening And that broke Israel's monopoly on the narrative, especially given that the Muslims in particular, the 1.9 billion Muslims around the world They rushed to amplify the voice of the Palestinians, which broke the algorithm of social media For those who don't know, the algorithm is designed to show popular posts So when something has billions of views, it naturally puts it at the top of the homepage It naturally shows the video on TikTok and beyond Meaning that social media, which bypasses mainstream media, which bypasses CNN, which bypasses BBC which bypasses NBC and MSNBC and all these abbreviations you guys have for everything like Epic Masjid When I was told about Epic Masjid My first reaction was, that's a bit of an arrogant, brazen thing to say, like to call it an epic masjid And everybody kept telling me epic masjid is epic And then I only realized that epic was an abbreviation when I turned up to epic masjid and it said East Plaino Islamic Centre And I went, oh, that's why But then I realized, I think somebody did it on purpose, you know, to make sure that the abbreviations would be epic But the point is that with all these abbreviation of these channels And Irving, of course, the reputation is, I think, number one in Dallas, they say apparently, ما شاء الله，在任何情况下 Don't worry, when I go to epic, I won't say the opposite, but in any case The point is that as a result of the social media which bypassed these channels People are now seeing the truth of the matter that was happening, which resulted in Biden falling in the polls And because Biden fell in the polls What resulted is a policy shift in which Antony Blinken, the Secretary of State Went from banning the State Department from using the word pause or ceasefire To rushing to Netanyahu in Tel Aviv and breaking all those climate change policies by burning the air miles in order to, for genocide and ethnic cleansing, because climate change and ethnic cleansing and genocide But the point is, he went to Tel Aviv and he said to Netanyahu that we need to change the marketing strategy for genocide and ethnic cleansing And Netanyahu was so frustrated that according to Axios He told Blinken that I don't want to do this humanitarian pause unless I'm sure that it's not a trap by Biden to lure me into a ceasefire The idea being that Allah سبحانه وتعالى says, you think their hearts are united, but قلوبهم شتى, their hearts are divided The point is that shift in policy in the American policy was brought about by an Ummah that refused to be quiet, by an Ummah that chose to move, by an Ummah that chose to raise its voice Amplifying the voice of the Palestinians Breaking Israel's monopoly over the narrative by breaking the algorithm Which resulted in the message reaching new corners of the world, people who'd never heard the Palestinian voices Which resulted in them changing their minds on Palestine and Israel Which resulted in a shift in public opinion, which resulted in Biden falling in the polls Which resulted in the Democrats panicking and going to Netanyahu and saying We can't keep committing genocide and ethnic cleansing in the manner that we'd like We have to adjust the way we do it because the ordinary Muslim refuses to be quiet And that's the point of this chain effect And the reality is, even when you look at this chain effect You see it even in the Sia of the Prophet Muhammad ﷺ In that the Prophet ﷺ in the first thirteen years doesn't have an army He doesn't have money, he doesn't have a media But he keeps presenting his Da'wa and calling to Allah سبحانه وتعالى Which results in a public opinion shift that means that Umar bin al-Khattab leaves the army and the money and the media to go and join the weak and persecuted Muslims Musa bin Umayr رضي الله عنه, who would go down the roads in Quraish and you would smell his perfume As a result of the shift in public opinion In Quraish, where people were seeing that the Prophet Muhammad ﷺ That his message was correct, even though he didn't have an army or media or money They left the elites of Quraish to go and join these weak and persecuted Muslims And that's what we're seeing today, in that The Palestinians don't have the army the way that Israel does, they don't have the money the way Israel does They don't have the media the way Israel does, but as a result of the mobilization or this Great Awakening as you called it, we're seeing a shift That meant Blinken went to Israel and told Netanyahu that we need to shift from no ceasefire to humanitarian pause, to hostage truce, to sustainable ceasefire To reports today that came out in Haritz that there's a two-month truce about to be announced between Hamas and between the Israelis So the point here being is that The reality is when we talk about this Great Awakening There are many people who want to underplay the role that public opinion plays in the wider political game But here you can clearly see a direct correlation between the loudness of your voices in speaking about Palestine and the impact that has at the highest levels And the reason why I emphasize this particular point Is that there's a reason why billions were spent to shadow ban accounts, to close down social media accounts to shut down pages, to limit the reach of hashtag Palestine Because Netanyahu and Blinken identified a threat in these voices that needed to be contained And that threat was so great that they needed to spend billions of dollars on that But even though they spent billions of dollars on that PR narrative, the Ummah broke that narrative for free And that's the point that I want to emphasize here, and when we're talking about this Great Awakening that's taking place What we're seeing is that foreign governments are now having to adjust their policy because of the shift in public opinion We saw Kamala Harris come out and she announced a program, the first in American history, she says, to counter Islamophobia The reason that she introduced this program was not because she suddenly felt guilty about the Muslims or the like The reason is because the Democrats got together and they said, there's a problem here While it's true that Biden is behind his rivals in a number of swing states The problem is the swing states that he's behind his rivals happen to be the states where the Muslims potentially have the deciding vote Axios reported that if Biden loses, quote, even a sliver of the Muslim vote in any of these swing states, he loses And Politico reported that if Biden loses 100,000 votes in Deibon al-Mubarak Then he will lose Michigan completely The point here being is that While many Muslims want to undermine the role of speaking out and public opinion I remember one Sheikh who stood next to me once, we had a talk, and he said, after I finished speaking and telling people Move, Ya Ibad, Allah speak loudly, he said, Sami wants to liberate the Ummah via WhatsApp But the point is that, but the reality is that While many Muslims don't appreciate the value of their voice The reality is that those who say the voice doesn't matter Those who say public opinion doesn't matter are directly rejecting the Hadith of the Prophet Muhammad ﷺ When he said، convey from me even if it's just a verse Many people want to read this Hadith as a spiritual Hadith in which when you hear it, you say، and you feel good about yourself But the emphasis in this Hadith is on the وَلَوْ، convey from me even if it's just a verse What the Hadith is saying is, if you do not have any power to advance the cause If you do not have any ability to advance the cause If you don't have an army or money or wealth or influence or any of these talents Then he said, don't be an Ummah that's quiet, don't be an Ummah that does nothing, don't be an Ummah that doesn't mobilize Convey from me even if it's just a verse Be an Ummah that raises its voice even if it doesn't have any other power to do anything else And what we're seeing today is a manifestation of that Hadith In that when we're raising our voices and everybody said We don't have the power to stop the genocide and ethnic cleansing physically But we will use the powers that we have within our means to try to make a difference The Ummah took one step, Allah took ten steps in accordance with the Hadith al-Qudsi In which that voice was amplified to the extent that as a result of the decline in public opinion Biden told Netanyahu in the fifth week of the genocide, according to CNN that, quote, as a result of the bombardment of the videos of the atrocities being committed in Gaza I can no longer support you in the way that you want You don't have months, you probably only have a few weeks And Eli Cohen, the Israeli Foreign Minister, said in the following day that we have only two weeks left before international pressure comes to bear down on us We're seeing Macron come out, call for a ceasefire The Deputy Prime Minister of Belgium calling for sanctions on Israel We're seeing Spain say it's ready to recognize a Palestinian state We saw David Cameron today say we need an immediate ceasefire We saw the Finnish Foreign Minister from Finland saying this self-defense is finished This is now, it needs to end right now, we're seeing this shift that is taking place To such an extent that the Zionist writer in The Hill wrote that while Netanyahu may win the battle Netanyahu has lost public opinion in such a way that he has caused permanent damage with our allies And he writes, I fear that our allies will no longer come to our rescue in the manner they did before in future conflicts The point here being, and to wrap up on this particular point is When we talk about the Great Awakening The Great Awakening is not just within the Ummah itself The Great Awakening is amongst the world where when you look at the polls They show that a new generation of Americans, non-Muslims No longer side with Israel, they side with the Palestinians And that's because the Ummah that thought itself weak Decided to manifest its power and roar And they broke the algorithm, they broke Israel's monopoly on the narrative And the reality is, and I'll finish on this particular point When Rasulullah ﷺ broke Quraish's control over the narrative When he spent those thirteen years and shifted public opinion And caused ruptures, it's called ruptures in the foreign policy ties between Quraish and Habashah Then Awwson Khazirj turned up thirteen years later They knew the Prophet ﷺ had no army, they knew he didn't have money They knew he didn't have a media, they knew he was persecuted But because of the shift in public opinion in Arabia They agreed to give him their full support The point being is those underestimating public opinion Know that the shift in public opinion is what creates the environment That creates new opportunities that leads eventually to the justice that you desire and that you seek
ذاك الله خير، brother Sami، بلى الله My next brother Sami is that I think you already talked about the help globally wise, but I want to explicitly say what Nelson Mandela said We know to where that our freedom is incomplete without the freedom of Palestine So in your view, why is South Africa a pioneer in condemning Israel for genocide? Are there parallel between South Africa and the Palestinian cause?
I think first of all, I think it's one of the greatest tragedies of modern times That we have how many Muslim states, and it took South Africa to bring the case to the ICJ in support of the Palestinians, and I think it's a terrible stain on the Muslim leaders and the Muslim nations, that I idea that There is an Arabic saying that my brother is a lion when he fights me, but he's an ostrich in war in that he puts his head in the sand when he has to face somebody other than me Regardless, I think South Africa deserves huge plaudits for bringing that case to the ICJ And I think one of the reasons why it's significant that South Africa did it is because South Africa knows what apartheid feels like, it knows what apartheid looks like So when it looks at Israel, it knows emphatically that it is an apartheid state And it knows emphatically that what's happening to the Palestinians is almost identical to what happened to the blacks in South Africa The way the whites used to persecute them The way the whites used to make them go through, make the blacks go through all these various different checkpoints The way they would violate their rights and the like, and the way they would render them not second class or third class but fifth class citizens And I think that's why for South Africa in particular They have a very strong affinity towards populations that have suffered something very similar to them, and that's why I think it's significant that South Africa did so, I also think of course that when it comes to South Africa as well, we're seeing this you know, the world shift to become a new multipolar world as well, there are new orbits that are forming together The US is no longer the hegemon that it once was, which allows the space for many of these nations to now manifest themselves more and more But I think that when it comes to South Africa in particular, South Africa knows what apartheid feels like, it knows what genocide feels like It put this case in the ICJ and it started a domino effect In that Chile and Bolivia have launched their own case at the ICJ against Israel Indonesia felt a bit of shame that a non-Muslim country did it So they decided to put a case in the ICJ as well, against Israel as well There's an ICJ ruling expected tomorrow for the South Africa case, tomorrow at the time of this recording But the point is that they're expecting that maybe the ICJ will issue a temporary order that will suggest that there's enough grounds to indict Israel on genocide There's deep concern, Netanyahu today met with his legal team The US administration is concerned about the implications of being seen to be associated with the genocide in legal terms Which is why John Kirby came out and said that we haven't actually done investigation into whether Israel has committed war crimes, and that's to create plausible deniability In the case, in case Israel is found guilty of genocide The US can say we had no knowledge about it because we didn't investigate it or the like Although now they're struggling today because There was the video yesterday that went viral, that was caught by a Western media organization of a Palestinian holding a white flag, and the Israelis, they sniped him down instead So I think Nelson Mandela was right, the freedom is not complete without the freedom of the Palestinians Mandela had a very warm relationship with the Muslim world Mandela, when he came to the US when he was alive, they said to him, why do you have ties with Libya and Cuba and these other places as well? He said, we judge our relations based on those who acted to give us freedom not those who gave us empty rhetoric And I think that's what we're seeing here, in that South Africa knows that the Muslims played a very heavy role in the liberation of South Africa They played a very prominent role in the liberation of South Africa Mandela had a very warm affinity for the Muslims Because the Muslims throughout history have always been the sanctuary for oppressed people Just as when the Jews were persecuted in Spain by Isabella, they fled to the Muslim lands When they were gassed and slaughtered by the Europeans in the Holocaust, they fled to the Muslim lands When they were slaughtered in Warsaw in Poland, in the Warsaw ghetto, they fled to the Muslim lands South Africa understands, just as Europe reluctantly does that in history, the greatest sanctuary that oppressed people always found was always amongst the Muslims, because Allah سبحانه وتعالى said Do not let a hatred of a people lead you to injustice Allah said, regardless of who the person is in front of you if there is a haq that they are entitled to be the ones on the front line to ensure their haq, whether they're Muslim or non-Muslim And South Africa appreciates that, and we extend our thanks to South Africa for returning the favor and launching this case in the ICJ
So my next question, brother Sami, is that you already talked about the Ummah of Muhammad ﷺ, our Ummah What makes us weak? And why the Palestinian cause, it used to be the cause of the whole Ummah, why it starts resizing it, resizing it until it becomes in Gaza?
I think that, I often get posed this question, why is the Ummah weak? And why is the Ummah in a difficult situation or the like? And I think there's a difference between weak and difficult situation Difficult situation does not mean you're weak, difficult situation means you're in a battle that you're struggling It doesn't mean that you're weak or defeated And the reason why I reject the idea that the Ummah is weak and that it has all
Wait a minute, I'm not talking about the Ummah as people, I'm talking about the government in issue
We'll get to the government, but in terms of the government themselves and their interests I think that when it comes to the governments, the reality is that the governments all have their particular interests that they're following And before I continue, I should stress that The opinions expressed by the speaker belong to the speaker themselves, they do not reflect the organization or those who invited me, or Irvine Masjid, or Irving Masjid, or the likes, so please, it has nothing to do with them, it's all to do with me I think that when we look at the three major countries, or five major countries that are having a major impact Saudiya, UAE, Turkey, Jordan and Egypt I think that individually, they all have very conflicting interests that results in them deciding not to join the support for the Palestinians, and in some cases, in two of those examples Two countries in particular siding very closely with the Israelis And what I mean is, I truly believe that based on what we've seen in front of us That one of the reasons that Biden has not called for a ceasefire is because Biden is genuinely confused On the one hand, Biden is being told that Muslims are angry He's being told that Muslims want to punish him and punish genocide Joe and the like And that there's a Rabbo Raza from London who's going around telling people to punish genocide Joe On the other hand, he's being told by his Muslim allies in the region, too in particular that genocide is not a red line, we're not really bothered by it, we're ready to normalize ties We're ready to keep talking about normalization As long as you give us a NATO-style security agreement against Iran As long as you give us nuclear technology to build our own nuclear weapon And as long as you support Vision 2030 Because when we tried to bring Nicki Minaj and Iggy Azalea We're making an effort to de-Islamize the kingdom, we've introduced alcohol, we introduced a bikini beach as well into the land of the holy mosques And still you're not responding, we're ready to do more, but we want to see genuine support for you as well So I think that when it comes to, for example, Saudi Arabia I think that Saudi has what it believes to be an economic, existential economic crisis and existential security crisis Existential economic crisis in that for those of you who remember, in 2016 or 2015, Saudi Arabia burnt through one-sixth of its treasury in one year Because the oil price was so low, because the Americans were pushing to try to take a larger chunk of the market, and the price was going lower because of shale oil or the like Saudis realize legitimately so that they badly need to diversify their economy and they need to do so quickly And that's where Vision 2030 comes in, Vision 2030 is about diversifying the economy to make it less reliant on oil, which is why they need new revenues They need Shakira concerts, Pitbull, raves in the desert, they need all these other alcohol They need, I'm not saying they need it, they're arguing, it's not me saying it ذاك الله عظيم، I need to be careful The point is that they believe that Vision 2030 needs to open up And as a result, they made changes to the system whereby in the education curriculum, for example They reduced the hours that students spend on Arabic Fiqh, Islamic education and Quran They reduced it from 38 hours to 25 hours And they dedicated those extra 13 hours to subjects of critical thinking, their words, not mine The point being is that there's been a reduction in the volume of Islam in Saudi Arabia An attempt to restrict it to Mecca and Medina in order to allow the rest of Saudi Arabia to start to open up to build cities that in the words of the Saudi Crown Prince, look like Miami He uses that as his model, not Shanghai or Moscow And the way that they do it, Saudi believes, bin Salman says, here's a trade-off Muslims can land in Jeddah, they can go do to Mecca and Medina and pray there and do their rituals that they want to do about Islam And the rest of Saudi Arabia will be free to do whatever, and that, he believes that's a necessity in order to become an economic power because the country relies too much on oil The problem for Saudi Arabia however is that When the Saudi Crown Prince came to power in 2017, he visited America 2018 He met Mark Zuckerberg, Oprah Winfrey, all these leaders, and he told the Americans, come and invest in Vision 2030 All the Americans were excited, there's a new Crown Prince, he's talking about opening Saudi Arabia or the like The problem was the following year Khashoggi entered an embassy and never came out When he didn't come out, there was a big, you know, huge media buzz about Khashoggi The Saudis believed that Khashoggi was a regime man, he was part of us, and therefore Why is everybody making a big deal out of him? This is an internal regime issue But as a result of issues with Qatar and the like, there was a really media campaign that really elevated the issue And Erdogan also, you know, started leaking some of the gruesome details As a result, companies didn't go to Saudi Arabia in 2018 2019, they still didn't go because there was a Khashoggi issue 2020, when Khashoggi issue was lifting a bit and people were starting to forget, Covid hit When Covid hit, companies still wouldn't come to Saudi Arabia because nobody was investing When 2021, Covid started lifting a little bit, Biden wins the election When Biden wins the election, he says that the Saudi Crown Prince is a pariah and I'm not going to deal with him, so companies are hesitant to go to Saudi Arabia because they're worried Biden is going to implement sanctions, so the Saudi Crown Prince reconciles with Qatar, he gets Al Jazeera to be quiet about all of his affairs and the like Something that's very important even in the Gaza issue, because you'll note, Al Jazeera doesn't talk about any of the positions of the Arab countries, because they want to keep the peace with Saudi Arabia and the UAE, it's a red line, no one is allowed to talk about it in Qatar But the point is that after 2021, you get to 2022 Five years in power and Vision 2030 is not moving Vision 2030, the economic diversification is not moving in the way that you want, so much so that they had to take an extra dividend from Aramco And they had to change the structure of the Public Investment Fund to try to cover the losses that they made in that year that might put companies off So you get to 2021, you get to 2022, Biden comes to Jeddah, he wants a reset But when Biden comes to Jeddah, he asks for a reset, but then humiliates the Saudi Crown Prince Because when he comes out of the meeting with the Saudi Crown Prince, because of the American free press Because when he comes out of the meeting with the Saudi Crown Prince, because of the American free press, all the journalists come out and they say, what about Khashoggi? What about Khashoggi? And Biden turns around and he says, I told the Crown Prince about Khashoggi and I let him know who I thought did it. And the Saudi Crown Prince panics. So Saudi media, they say that the Saudi Crown Prince responded and said, you're talking about Khashoggi, what about Shereen Abu Aqla, what did you about her? Whatever you think about the Crown Prince, that's a touche, that's a good response. In any case, it's clear that the tensions between Biden and the Saudi Crown Prince are still there. So we enter the end of 2022. Six years Bin Salman's been in power, Vision 2030 is not moving. 2023, he gets so frustrated that he imposes tariffs on goods coming across UAE to tell companies, you can't be based in UAE and do business in Saudi Arabia. And then he tells companies that whoever doesn't have a headquarters in Riyadh, they will not be able to win government contracts. And then he starts to essentially try to squeeze those companies. The point being is Saudi Arabia believes it's in an economic existential crisis and it badly needs the Americans and American support to help to invest into its economy. The security existential crisis is that when you open a map of Saudi Arabia, and imagine this is Saudi Arabia, to your north, you have Iraq, 23 militias that are pro-Iran, that have been firing missiles at the Saudi royal palace and whose leader Abu Mahdi al-Muhaddith in 2019 gave a lecture, who was killed by Donald Trump. He gave a lecture in Tehran where the student said to him, Masha Allah, you are a Mujahid who will liberate Al-Aqsa. And he said, no, no, not Al-Aqsa, Riyadh, Riyadh, that's our destiny, that's where we're going. It's, anybody can find it online, it's a viral video. On the east, you have Iran itself, which Iran can close the Hormuz whenever it wants. And the Saudis are worried that the Americans won't do enough. To the south, there are the Houthis who've been firing missiles at oil facilities. And when they fired the missiles at the Abqayyik oil facility, the Saudis expected the Americans to intervene. Instead, the Americans didn't intervene, which is why the Saudis went to the Iranians and said, please, 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 give me five years of peace, what do you want? They said, I want Bashar al-Assad to be back in the Arab League. They said, Hader. They said, I want investment in Syria so I can get the money, my compensation for rescuing Assad. They said, Hader. They said, I want you to talk to the Houthis and make a deal with them and recognize them, Hader. I want compensation to be given to the Houthis. He said, Hader. And then the negotiations stalled, why? Because Biden said that if you normalize ties with Israel, I might give you a NATO-style security agreement and I might give you nuclear weapons. So when Israel commits a genocide in Gaza, Bin Salman says to himself that I'm on the verge of getting the Americans to invest in Vision 2030 and to give me protection against Iran from those militias. I'm not going to compromise those two things for a bunch of Palestinians who aren't even going to go anywhere anyway. They're going to stay in Gaza, Netanyahu is not going to be able to kill them. That felt sickening to say, but in any case, it is what it is. The Saudis believe that as a result, their Vision 2030, Shakira concert, Iggy Azalea, Ngano and Tyson Fury, this opening up of the kingdom, introducing alcohol, these are all very important things for Vision 2030, for the future of Saudi Arabia. I'm not jeopardizing that. And Bin Salman also argues, legitimately so in my opinion, he says that the first country to willingly normalize with Israel was Qatar in 1996. When Qatar normalized ties and they established an economic office in Doha and the largest US military base in exchange for the Americans preventing Saudi from invading. For those who don't know, long story short, and the Emir is sick, he goes to Switzerland for medical treatment. His son calls him in Switzerland and says, Baba, don't come back, I've taken over this country. The father says, what are you doing, what do you mean? He calls Saudi and UAE and says, my son has done a coup, please put me back in power. The Saudis say, no problem, we can't have sons like toppling their fathers. They get ready to invade Qatar. The Qatari Emir, who's taken over the son, calls the Americans and the French and says, Wallahi, if you stop the Saudis from invading, I will establish ties with Israel. I won't do like Egypt and Jordan where it's a peace treaty. I'll willingly do it. I'll set up an economic office and I will set up the largest US military base if you stop Saudi and UAE from entering. The Americans get so excited, they call Saudi, they say, don't you dare invade Qatar. The Saudi Crown Prince says that the Ummah makes a million excuses for Qatar because they have Al Jazeera and some Ulama and their scholars and the like. And they're willing to turn a blind eye to other things. UAE, when it normalized ties, they got, you know, some Mashaaikh, we won't name them, who came out and said that this is, you know, there is a hikmah in this and the like. And there are some prominent American Mashaaikh who also justified it as well. And there are many Muslims who said, you know, maybe he has a point. The Saudi Crown Prince says, if the Ummah makes excuses for Qatar and UAE, why wouldn't they make excuses for me? When I normalize ties for my own interests, I'll keep my Ulama giving Da'wa and Durus and stuff and people can listen to it and they can cry when they listen to these Imams and say, Masha Allah, I'm getting closer to Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala. They don't need to come to the concerts and raves. When they land in Jeddah, whoever wants to go to the concert and make Toba afterwards, they can go. And whoever just wants to go straight to Mecca, then go straight to Mecca. But in any case, the point here being is the Saudi Crown Prince believes Palestine is not worth it. There are some who would say that you mentioned a lot about Saudi Arabia, but the reality is the Muslim powers don't, they don't have options. The reality is that when Biden offended Bin Salman personally, Bin Salman squeezed Biden. He cut the oil production, increased the prices, and he made Biden come and beg him in Jeddah for a reset in relations. When the Canadian ambassador accused Saudi Arabia of a poor human rights record, Bin Salman kicked out the Canadian ambassador and ripped up agreements with the Canadians. And the Canadians, eight months later, begged Bin Salman for a reset in ties. When the Germans said, we're not selling anything to Saudi Arabia, Bin Salman cut off investments from Germany. And last week, the Germans came out and said, please, 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 we will give you the weapons that you want, please come back and invest in Germany. When you offend Bin Salman personally, he knows how to squeeze the Western powers to beg him to make concessions. But when it comes to Gaza, he doesn't believe that it's worth it. And that's why I think that one of the reasons that Biden hasn't called for a ceasefire is because Saudi Arabia has consistently and proactively reassured the Americans that normalization is still possible even though a genocide of 20,000 people have been killed. For the UAE as well, UAE says that normalization of ties has meant that our militia that is rampaging in Sudan doesn't get any scrutiny because Congress is too scared that if they scrutinize this militia that is committing a genocide in Western Sudan, then UAE might get upset and reverse normalization. And normalization is more important than countering this genocide taking place in Sudan. The UAE believes that normalization is what prevents Congress and the White House from putting pressure on it. And for those who think that perhaps Sami is exaggerating, there is an interview by the former Qatari Prime Minister with France 24 in November 2018, worth watching in my opinion. Around 36 minutes, 37 minutes into the interview, he says that, look, when Arabs talk to the Israelis, it's not because they like the Israelis. It's because they believe that Israel is the key to the Congress and the White House. Now he continues and he says, but we in Qatar, when we normalize, we did it because we want to see Israelis in Riyadh and in Doha and these other places. But that's irrelevant because they have Muslim scholars, the Ummah turns a blind eye to what Qatar does. But in any case, the point here being is that when you, the UAE normalized and believed that it got 100% benefit from that normalization. Erdogan in Turkey says, I have an economic crisis because for 20 years, I increased interest rates. And then as I got older, I felt now is the time that I make it haram and I need to bring those interest rates down now. After 20 years halal, and now suddenly I need to bring them down. And as a result, the currency crashed. He says, I need money, I'm suffering with an economic crisis, or the like. So Erdogan has been squeezed in the Mediterranean, squeezed by the US, squeezed by Russia. So he decided to go to the Israelis and say, let's build a joint gas pipeline in the Mediterranean. Let's share the gas. And let's build an economic corridor that starts in Israel and goes through Turkey to Central Asia and connects with Europe. And that's why the week before, October 7, the week before, he shook hands with Netanyahu and said, we're ready to establish warmer ties and the like. Erdogan believes that he doesn't want to jeopardize those relations with Israel. But he's been told by Biden, and I do believe this is Biden's position, that Biden wants Netanyahu out. If you notice, four days ago, when Blinken went to Tel Aviv, Blinken met with Yair Lapid and with Benny Gantz, two opposition figures in Israel, without the permission of Netanyahu. And if you look at Netanyahu's statement after the meeting, Netanyahu said two things. He said, we reject a two-state solution and we don't believe this is the right time to hold elections. It was a pushback against the Americans' demand to try to push Netanyahu out. Which is why when you listen to Erdogan's speeches, most of his speeches, we can't work with Netanyahu. We can't deal with Netanyahu. We don't want to talk to Netanyahu. The message being that Netanyahu is going, but we want to maintain that Sha'arat Muawiyah. For those who don't know what Sha'arat Muawiyah is, it's the hair of Muawiyah. Muawiyah once said that, if I argue with my brother and we're on the verge of cutting ties and all that remains between us is a hair and we're both pulling, I will not pull on the hair to make sure I keep relations and contact and the way back to reconciliation. So Erdogan is keeping a Sha'arat Muawiyah. I don't think Muawiyah would be happy if I ever used it in that context. But in any case, using Sha'arat Muawiyah with the Israelis. And that's why I think that when Netanyahu came out in the second week and said, we thank our friends for understanding our position with regards to the genocide, the friends he was referring to were the Muslim leaders who were saying to the Americans that genocide is not a red line. Genocide is not problematic because we have these interests that we need to do. Having said that, and this is where I wrap up on this, having said that, the public opinion has affected Muslim nations as well. The reason Erdogan went from a neutral statement to lambasting Israel is because the Turks got so angry that they began to turn their anger at Erdogan. And Erdogan panicked, and that's why he's been organizing rallies to allow the Turks to vent off steam, to let them out and giving them the speeches. Because there was a video that went viral in Turkey of a Turk where he said, Erdogan, you called us onto the streets in 2016 to rescue you from the attempted coup, call us out now for Gaza. And Erdogan panicked and went and organized that million-man rally in Istanbul. And he's been doing rally to let, to at least let the Turks feel like he's doing something. Despite the fact that trade has increased between Israel and Turkey 30% since the start of the genocide. Although there are reports that Erdogan might be cutting ties or the like. But for example, the Ummah has also had an impact on Bin Salman in Saudi Arabia. So for those who haven't been following Saudi Arabia and the de-Islamization process, over the past couple of years, Imams have been restricted in their ability to make Dua for Palestine or talk about current affairs. So in the first few days after the genocide began, the Saudi state television, for the first time in a year, broadcast the Dua of the Haramain. And they broadcast the Dua in Mecca and the Imam was making Dua for Palestine. This was the Saudi Crown Prince concerned about his population and therefore trying to show that we are also on the side of Palestine. While trying to balance it by mobilizing the scholars to give fatwa to say that talking about Gaza is fitnah. Many of you will have seen the video of Abdurrahman Al-Sudais, the Imam of Mecca, where he said, we make Dua for Gaza, but we don't talk about it because it's a fitnah. And obey your ruler and obey your scholars. We saw the Khutbah in Madinah al-Munawwara where the Imam said, make Dua for Gaza, but don't talk about it and beware the Rabo Raza from London who might turn you, he didn't say Rabo Raza from London, but but beware those who might turn you against your leader. When my, my wife, my wife and I, we run this travel company. We try to reconnect memories of the Ummah taking people to different destinations. So she went to present on a new theory about the industry in the World Halal Summit in Istanbul. When she went there, there is a friend of ours, he was an advisor to Mahatir in Malaysia. He said to her, tell Sami that I'm going to Umrah in December. And I received a WhatsApp message that says, when I go to Umrah, please don't bring a Kaffiyah, don't bring a free Gaza sticker and please don't record yourselves making Dua for Gaza. So I told my wife, I can't talk about this because it's a rumor and I haven't seen any evidence of it. And trust me, American Imams have pushed back on my videos before. I'm not interested in risking a backlash, especially because I'm going to America soon, Insha Allah. In any case, Staghfirallah. In any case, when I landed in LA, in beautiful, blue sky, sunny LA, 27 degrees Celsius on the 25th of November, for a guy who has five days of summer a year and they don't even come at the same time, I said to myself, Allah, I will never spend winter anywhere else. But in any case, I should be wary though, every place I go in America, it's always raining. It's like Allah said, you didn't show gratitude for the weather. I'm going to give you rain everywhere you go. Even when I went to San Diego, I saw rain. So Allahumma, I'm grateful for the weather, Ubbarakallah for the rain. And I give you also better from it, I'm thankful for the rain. So Insha Allah, when I go San Jose tomorrow, I see the sun. Gulu Amin. In any case, when I went to LA, I gave my talk and then we went to have dinner in the evening. And I said to the brothers sitting around, there were about maybe 15, 20 of them. And I said, you know, I heard a rumor that when you go Umrah, you're not allowed to record yourself making Dua for Gaza. And one person stood up and he said, Sami, it's not a rumor. Here's the WhatsApp message, I'm going to Umrah next month, here it is. And the message said, it's with a heavy heart that we inform you that we've been informed by the authorities in Saudi Arabia not to make Dua for Gaza, not to record yourselves and not to bring Kafirs. But public opinion was so loud and so frightening for Bin Salman that although in the first week, they were arresting people wearing Kafirs, in Saudi Arabia last week, there are many people wearing Kafirs because they've been told by the Saudis that we're worried about the backlash, go easy in terms of your crackdown on Kafirs or the like. The thing is, they're trying to play it in both ways because what Bin Salman is realizing is that the Ummah stands for Haq, not Baatul. The Ummah doesn't follow personalities, it follows Haq. So when they see personalities with Haq, they stand with them. When they see the personalities abandon Haq, they tear them down. They loved Abdurrahman Al-Sudais when he read the Quran. And when he gave that fatwa, they started to stop listening to Abdurrahman Al-Sudais. And that's the thing, and that's what Bin Salman realized. The point is, and I know I said I'm wrapping up already, but I promise this is where I wrap up. But the point that I'm saying is that while it's true that the Muslim leaders are demonstrating their own interests with regards to Gaza Palestine and therefore betraying Gaza Palestine, public opinion is also having an impact in that they're also buckling and having to offer concessions to their people because they're worried about the backlash that their support for Zionism will- and for those who insist, why did you say support for Zionism? I will give you two examples and I promise we'll go to the next question. The first example is that in the third week of the genocide, the Saudis invited Jared Kushner, Trump's son-in-law, to give a keynote speech at the Davos in the Desert Forum. And Jared Kushner, from the heart of Saudi Arabia, while the genocide is going on, he gave a keynote speech in which he said that, October 7, was designed to ruin normalization between Saudi Arabia and Israel and they will not succeed. And not a single Saudi in the forum said, how dare you say this in the heart of Saudi Arabia. And he was allowed, and he said that normalization is still very much possible and the Saudis are telling me that normalization can go ahead soon. The second example is that on the night that Israel cut off communications in Gaza, cut off the internet and began its ground invasion, Shakira was in Riyadh, dancing in the Riyadh season concert. And the day before, the Muslims were saying that why is this concert going ahead when Gaza is being slaughtered? And Turki Al Sheikh, the head of the General Entertainment Authority, ironically, the descendant of Sheikh Mohammed bin Abdul Wahhab, Turki Al Sheikh said, he wrote a Facebook post where he said, name me one concert that has been canceled in the world because of a political event. How can you ask me to cancel it for Gaza? And he didn't even say at the end, may Allah have mercy on the shuhada in Gaza. But the irony was that when the Emir of Kuwait died, Allah Ya Rahmu, when the Emir of Kuwait died, they had a huge concert planned on the day that he died. So the Saudis were caught in a catch-22. If we don't cancel the concert, because the Arab saying goes that if you have a wedding but your neighbor has a janazah, you delay the wedding. If we don't cancel the concert, we will have a diplomatic crisis with Kuwait. And Kuwait are good friends. But if we cancel the concert, the Ummah will know that we don't care about Gaza because we didn't, we canceled it for the Kuwait, Emir of Kuwait, but we don't cancel it for Gaza. In the end, they felt they didn't want to risk a diplomatic crisis with Kuwait. So they canceled the concert for Kuwait. So Turki Al Sheikh was talking nonsense when he said, we don't cancel political events. They canceled the concerts for two days in solidarity with Kuwait, but have not canceled a single concert with regards to Gaza. But having said that, public opinion is making a difference even on Saudi Arabia, even on UAE. UAE blamed the Palestinians for what happened, but as a result of public pressure, they allowed their commentators to criticize Israel and they were the first to send aid to Gaza. And also, while the UAE were, are reassuring Biden and Israel that they will not reverse normalization, it was the UAE that let CNN presenters into Gaza to cover the reality because Bin Zayed said that I'm struggling with this public pressure coming from the Ummah. Biden has told me Netanyahu will go. Let me try to accelerate it by humiliating Netanyahu in front of the Americans so that Netanyahu can go, Benny Gantz can come to power and these Muslims can go back to their, you know, going back to, you know, just, you know, I want to make Hijra or I want to live a Muslim life, you know, in the UAE, you know, in a country where, you know, the government is massacring Muslims abroad. But because you can take Instagram selfies and of your Salaah in Sheikh Zayed Mosque, that's the pinnacle of Deen and the pinnacle of Islam for you. So, you know, Bin Zayed says, I know what the Muslim Ummah is like. They love to come to the UAE because they love my Masjid and they love the Islamic schools that I have. And they love the Islamic schools that I have, because for them, Islam is not like the Sahabah where you uphold justice. Islam for them is peace, security and comfort to do your five daily prayers in the Masjid and go to Islamic schools. And not be bothered with what's happening in the world. The, the dream of the Muslim today is to die in Medina, even though only a minority of Sahabah are buried in Medina. The majority are buried outside of Medina because their interpretation of Islam was that Allah will give victory to an Ummah that stands for justice. Whereas the interpretation of the Ummah today is that Allah will give victory to an Ummah that does the rituals but abandons the justice.
Allah, care my Allah, I, I think, I think everybody got the message. Uh, my next question is, do you agree that freeing Palestine? Can be seen as freeing the world from capitalism, ego, desires and greed? While calling humanity to a higher purpose in life?
I think that Palestine, when people talk about what does Palestine mean to people? I think for the Muslim, it's abundant Eklay in terms of its holiness. That I barakna ha'ulahu, we know, we made it blessed around it. Al-Aqsa being the mosque where the Prophet Muhammad Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam led all of the other prophets in prayer. Where the Prophet Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam ascended to seven heavens. Where he received the Barakah of prayer, where he received 50 Rakaat and then Moosa Alaihissalam said to him. I was the prophet of Ben Israel and Ben Israel could not even do three. Yeah, Muhammad, go back to your Lord and ask for less. So he went back Rasulullah and he was given 45, then he came down. Moosa Alaihissalam said, I know Ben Israel, they couldn't do three, go back and ask for less and the Prophet Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam came back down. But I think also. What Palestine represents more than anything else is this. Deficiency in the moral consciousness of the world. In that a people can be driven out of their homes, turfed from their land. Slaughtered in cold blood. For no other reason than a random group of people turned up from Europe after being persecuted. And said that I want to live in this house, in the words of Yaqub from Brooklyn. If I don't steal it, somebody else will. The point being is that it's a glaring deficiency in the global consciousness. Because although people recognize that the Palestinians have been unjustly treated in being turfed from their homes and their lands. And slaughtered after they welcomed the Jews who had been persecuted from Europe. After they embraced them and said that just as we embraced you when you were kicked out of Spain. Just as we embraced you when you were kicked out of Poland, just as we embraced you when anti-Semitic white supremacist Europe. Was so racist and so brutal that they declared the Balfour Declaration because they wanted to kick you out. Because they saw you as aliens, we are Muslims, they are not our teachers, we have a tolerance from Islam, not from them. We welcome you and instead of saying, thank you for welcoming us and let's live side by side as we always have. They decided to pick up a gun and go and shoot them instead. I think the reason it's a glaring deficiency in the moral consciousness is that although the world recognizes that the Palestinians have been wronged unjustly. Though instead of the world saying, let's come together to give redress and justice to the Palestinians. Instead, the international community has come together and said, let's talk about a two-state solution. The point being, instead of the world saying, let's give these Palestinians their homes back. They came together and instead of saying, let's give them their homes back and let's get justice. They said, how can we legalize the illegality? Let's talk about how much theft of land we can legalize under the two-state solution. Let's not make the negotiations about justice, let's make it and say that because we like these guys better than you. We want to acknowledge and recognize their theft of the land and we want to legalize it. Please tell us how much theft you're willing to swallow, how much theft you're willing to tolerate and we'll call this the peaceful two-state solution. The point being is that as long as Palestine is chained, the moral consciousness of the world, Muslim and non-Muslim. Is tainted and undermined by the fact that we're trying to legalize an oppression and immorality. And for the Muslim who says that Al-Aqsa is special to the Muslims because of the Masjid itself. I also remind them that the Prophet Muhammad Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam said. That the blood of a Muslim is dearer than a brick on the Kaaba. That the blood of a Muslim, that the Prophet Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam in Khutbah al-Wadhaa, in his last speech that he gave to the Muslims. He said, Inna dima'ukum wa a'raadukum wa waluqum haramun alaykum. Ka hormati yomikum haza, fi baladikum haza, fi shahrikum haza. The point being is that the Prophet Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam said that your blood, your wealth and your honor are sacred between you. The same sacredness, the same sanctity as this holy land that you're on. In this holy month that you are in, in this holy place that we're in. The point being is the Prophet Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam, even when you read in the Quran about why Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala was so angry with Quraish. He always talks about, Lina ukhrijju min diharihem wa udufi. Those kicked, driven out of their homes, those driven, even when he tells the Sahabah about what they should do to get their justice. He says, drive them out from where they drove you out, but don't transgress beyond that. The point is Allah insisting on the justice and the reason why I mentioned this point is, is to wrap up on this particular point, which is that. Muslims understand and, and non-Muslims need to understand that what the Muslim is looking for is not revenge, the Muslim is not driven by revenge. The Muslim is taught that the Prophet Muhammad Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam entered Mecca. And instead of taking revenge, he forgave Hind. Who had cut open the body of his uncle Hamza and mutilated it and ate his organ, ate his liver. He forgave Wahshi, who threw the spear that killed his uncle Hamza. He forgave the leaders of Quraish who had boycotted him and kicked him out of his land and warred with him for 23 years. He forgave all of them because the Prophet Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam was not sent as a curse to mankind. But as a mercy to guide them out of darkness into light. And that's why when it comes to Palestine and what it means, the reason why I mentioned justice and moral consciousness and not revenge. Is because when Umar ibn Khattab entered Jerusalem, he is the one who brought the Jews back who had been kicked out by the Christians. When Salah ad-Din Ayubi entered Al-Aqsa, entered Jerusalem. Whereas the Christians 100 years before had massacred 70,000 Muslims. Salah ad-Din Ayubi ordered that every Christian home was to be safe and protected. Because he said, they are not our teachers, the Prophet Muhammad Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam is our teacher. And the reason we use these examples in Islam is to emphasize that Palestine for us is not about revenge. It's not against the Jew, it's against injustice and oppression. And that's why when the Muslim sees the Jews stand up for the justice of Palestine. We embrace them like the cousin and we say, welcome to the cause of justice. And remember that we celebrate those Jews who did the sit-in in Congress calling for a ceasefire. I've been to the protests for Palestine, I've seen the Jews at those protests. Celebrating the justice of Palestine and saying, we stand with you as well. Because their Fitra that Allah created in every human being resonates with the justice that the Muslims call for. Because remember, and this is the final point I promised that I leave on, even in global history. There are three examples that are used objectively to describe the coexistence of religions. They are Andalusia under the Muslims. They are Sarajevo, which is called the Jerusalem of Europe, under the Muslims. And it is Jerusalem itself, which was only the epitome of coexistence when the Muslims ruled it. The West talks about its values when in reality, coexistence and tolerance, it comes from the rich history of Islam. It doesn't come from the history of white supremacist anti-Semitic Europe. Which put, which has the history of the Holocaust, of the Inquisition, of the Warsaw Ghetto. Of the, of the Night of the Long Knives where they destroyed Jewish buildings. It's Islam that has the rich history where it doesn't have any equivalent of the Holocaust, any equivalent of the Spanish Inquisition. And which saved the Jews every single time they were persecuted, which is why when the Muslim says to the Jew, why are you doing this to the Palestinians? They're not saying it from a state of revenge, they're saying it, we rescued you from Europe so many times. Why are you doing to the Palestinians what these anti-Semitic Europeans did to you?
So I'll give you two, three minute break, I know, to drink some water. So while it isn't break, Insha Allah, invite our Luqman come and do some Nashit for us. I have two, three questions after the Nashit, Insha Allah, then we're up, Insha Allah. Yeah, there is.
I promise I won't be too long with the answers, so we can have Q and A, Insha Allah.